I'll start again. Welcome to the ordinance revisions committee meeting for Tuesday, November 25th. Just as a reminder, this is a committee meeting, so we will discuss things, but no votes will be taken. No decisions will be made. And the, uh, we will begin the meeting with an opportunity for public comment where persons may speak for three minutes about any item, including those on the agenda. If you're logged into the Zoom, you can use the raise hand feature. Uh, if you're calling by phone, is there a phone option for the Zoom meeting? Not really, right? Okay. So I see one hand raised. So Alexis or Brett will, um, give you permission to speak. You'll have three minutes.
Yep. Give me one second. Caller ending in one, three, four. Um, you are, um, allowed to unmute and you can address the, um, committee for up to three minutes.
Um, thank you, Mr. Leo and Chair Abrams. It's Ken Garber, 28, Havre Hill Court. And thank you also, Mr. Leo, for your thoughtful memo addressing the sustainability height exception problem. When we removed FAR limits in D1 and D2 two years ago, that opened the floodgates. In the past 15 months, we've seen 1201 South University, 611 Church, 313 Brown Court, and 1209 South University all used it. 301 West Huron is seeking it. Five projects. Only 121 Catherine has used the affordability exception, and that's because it's Avalon. No market rate project has touched it. Commissioner Lee back in May explained why. For 625 Church, he estimated a hundred to $150,000 cost for the solar panels and conduit for the extra height, boosting the value of the building by 34 to $40 million. Not a bad investment. Once FAR went away, the height exception went from being an electrification incentive to a giveaway to developers. Commissioner Lee also explained why the affordability option is ignored. At an affordable versus market rate spread of $127 per square foot for the required 15% units, an in lieu contribution for 625 Church would have been around $3 million in order to obtain the extra 30% height. No one will do that when you can just slap on some solar panels. So what do we do? A better sustainability definition helps, but it's just as much of a giveaway. Upfront costs for an electrified building are not much different from gas heat. Remember, there's no ductwork. I think we should require both sustainability and affordability for the extra 30% in height. Commissioner Lee's analysis showed that even after an affordable housing in lieu contribution, there's still a big net increase in building value. I know that Jennifer Hall at the Housing Commission no longer seeks affordable housing units within market rate buildings. Given our failures, I understand that. But we should keep all our affordability tools, even the flawed ones. Market rate developers aren't going to build 100% affordable housing, but I think they will go for both electrification and the 15% affordable to get the 30% extra height. It's to their financial advantage. Uh, the proposed sustainability definition has three problems, in my view. We want any gas generator to produce current to run heat pumps. We don't want to burn fuel for heat in a dual heating system. That goes against the whole idea. So replace provide energy with provide electricity. Secondly, the term emergency situations is too vague. Replace it with electrical outages. Lastly, to encourage battery storage, we should only allow backup gas when the capacity is required by fire codes. So include that in the new definition. So, um, thank you for hearing me out and a happy Thanksgiving to everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have one other person on the line, but no hands raised.
All right. We will close the public comments session and move on to our agenda. Uh, we have two things on the agenda, exceptions to height limits and expanding administrative approvals and plan content. We'll start with height limits and I'll turn it over to staff.
All right. Uh, Mr. Garber, sort of, uh, um, do a little preview for me. But tonight we are introducing some concepts to change what features a development must include to receive an exception to the normal height limits of its zoning designation. We have been receiving concerns that the amount of increased building height offered is not proportional to the beneficial impacts or the investments needed to provide, um, uh, those features. I am, will be referring to a memo that is in the packet dated today, um, related to this, um, related to the exception to height limits. I can screen there, um, but I don't think we necessarily need to. In the memo, I go through some background. The, um, summary is that we introduced the exception to height limits, this specific paragraph, when we were doing the work to remove the planned project site plan modifications from the UDC. And projects was a tool that we had for a long time that, um, allowed, um, uh, proposed developments to exceed the area height and placement, um, not the density, no more additional dwelling units, no more additional floor area ratio. And you could not touch the permitted uses or other standards of the code like landscaping or parking. Those could only be touched with a PUD. But a planned project modification allowed the basic zoning dimensions, just, um, height and setbacks and placement on the site, um, to, um, to propose something different. And, um, there were seven listed features for reasons why. One of them was solar orientation or energy conserving design, and another was affordable housing. We, um, retired that option, but we added back some flexibility for the key points that we felt were most helpful to developments. One was a little bit of flexibility in height. Um, the current exception to height and definitions are that the height limits of this chapter, meaning the ordinance, can be increased by up to 30% when the following conditions are met. And number one was the development has either an affordable housing component or a sustainability component. We define, um, a sustainable component as when and where a solar collector's surface covers at least 60% of the building footprint on the site and electrical panels of the building have capacity to solely power the site by electricity. A key point is it doesn't actually say it needs to be an all electric building. And it doesn't say that you need to use the solar on the roof, or it could be adjacent to the building, but it has to be the, the calculations need to be 60%. They know what you do with all that, but it says you provide solar on 60% on the roof and you set yourself up to being all electric. Our affordable housing component is defined as 15% of dwelling units or 15% of the floor area is devoted to affordable housing. We do allow a payment in lieu with this, um, option. And we're going to be primarily focused on this sustainability definition. But as Mr. Garber mentioned, we've had a few projects since 2021 that have utilized the exception, um, all but one using the affordable housing component. So that means all of them were sustainable projects. We did have all of them happen to be all electric buildings with, uh, gas field backup generators. So they were exceeding our definition technically. The things that we're hearing, um, are also echoed and reinforced by a resolution that city council passed in July of summer that requested, um, some things go into the draft comprehensive plan. This is, uh, this is being a little bit ahead of the game. Not only will it go into the draft comprehensive plan, but we're going to try to, um, satisfy these requests here. It's not the work, decide these requests. So staff, um, we are, um, proposing for you initiating a discussion about three amendments related to this. The first is to revise the definition of sustainability component. The amendment would be to rename, strengthen, and clarify the definition via development solely powered by electricity. We have a proposed definition here. It was taken primarily from the city of San Francisco's ordinance. I am open to suggestions and criticisms, but this is our starting point where we just change the concept to flat out say you have to be an all electric development. Um, this stays in the same lane as the strategy two from the A20 plan, um, which talks about, uh, switching our appliances and vehicles from gasoline or, um, non-renewable energy sources to renewable energy sources. We think that changing the definition to be all electric eliminates the, any perceived confusion about the definition that mentions capacity and future conversions. And it also, as I mentioned, doesn't actually link the installation of solar powering the building from that source. Um, we could, uh, look at some of the other, um, A20 strategies. One might have been, uh, strategy three, which talks about improving the energy efficiency by achieving a third party certification, but we are not suggesting at that this time. It's very difficult to enforce. I think that we'll get more bang for our buck by staying in the lane of strategy two and, um, focusing on all electric buildings. Our second amendment is to revise the definition of affordable housing component and basically changing to 100% affordable. Uh, not, no longer 15% qualifies. You have to be an all affordable project. And we are proposing this because, you know, one of the goals of the planning commission, the planning department is to remove regulatory barriers developing affordable housing. Some strategies for us work better than others. It's like exceptions and premiums and voluntary options, um, that something when a percentage is offered up are not really realizing the affordable housing units as we intend. They, uh, they are either switching over and providing, um, a fee in lieu, or the units in some of the buildings, maybe they're remaining vacant much longer than expected because they're, it's very difficult to manage income verify and so forth, especially when the system is set up, um, by the private developer to be for market rate. You know, we're kind of throwing them a curve ball. They're not excelling at that. Or if they're using someone else like the city or the county to help with that vetting process, a huge amount of resources are going into this one unit. So some of the most successful and efficient ways to achieve affordable housing is, um, in the developments that are entirely affordable. Oh, we are, and we're saying this because we still want to provide projects that are, are developments that are affordable, uh, projects. If you're 100% affordable and you need that little bit of extra height for whatever reason, because, um, because you need to make your billing taller a lot or just a little bit because of the way construction codes are and you're a high, and you're a, um, stick built building that going to 75 feet, we'd like to remove that barrier for you. And then finally, this is an amendment speaking directly to the council's resolution to limit the exception to height limits to mixed use districts, where now it says the height limits of this chapter, meaning any district out there. Um, we would revise it to say the height limits of mixed use zoning districts specifically in table 517. That's the, uh, districts that begin with O for office, C for commercial, um, D for downtown or TC1. There are several flavors of C, but it's the O, C, D, and T districts that would be eligible for this one. Would, um, mention in closing that, um, those, uh, projects in a residential zoning district, whether it be single family, two family, or multi-family, um, they couldn't just exceed the height limit for any reason. Um, they couldn't just exceed the height limit with the building itself, but they, they will be able to still take advantage of the hardware related to, uh, solar panels on the roof is exempt from the, um, from the, the height limits of the chapter. Uh, that's it for my presentation. Um, I see that Brett has his hand up, so I will, Brett, go ahead.
Yeah. So, um, I don't know if commissioners have noticed, but there's a couple of other faces on this call. Chris Abling and Steve Christensen from the Office of Sustainability and Innovations. Um, the reason that they are here is they asked to join to, um, we've had some dialogue. I presented this memo to, uh, a group of, uh, sort of a cross-sectional group of city departments this morning. And out of that, I think that, um, they had some reactions to it. And so I wanted to give them an opportunity to talk to you a little bit about some of their perspectives. Um, in short, their advice to Austin, to you is that the sustainability component definition should be modified distinctly differently from how Alexis has presented it to you. As a summary, and I'll let them go into more detail, their proposed recommendation is that in order to attain that standard, you, uh, maintain the onsite 60% solar coverage that exists there. I just want to be fully transparent. I had asked, I'd suggest Alexis remove that based on previous conversations with OSI staff that, um, electrification was a bigger picture goal than solar renewable because particularly often, often with these buildings, it's a relatively small, um, impact to the energy usage on those buildings. Nonetheless, they are now, uh, clear that they would like to retain that. So I just want to be very clear about that. Um, they are absolutely supportive of full electric electrification. I think that as is defined by what Alexis has, has indicated. Um, they suggest adding two additional requirements. One would be air source or ground source heat pumps are required for on space site conditioning and that the net zero energy requirements in appendix CC of the International Energy Conservation Code, um, the 2021 version would have to be met for that building. And I, just to grossly oversimplify it, my understanding of that, and Chris or Steve can provide more clarification, is that that code requires that the building to be either designed and perform as a net zero or you enter into a contractual arrangement where you purchase the energy required to use that, to, to operate that building, use it through renewable sources. So you contract for a renewable source or perhaps you own a renewable energy source somewhere else that you commit to applying that energy to that development. So, uh, with the commission's, uh, understanding, I just wanted to give them the space to sort of, one, clarify if I've misstated any of those, uh, recommendations on how to define that. Um, and then to see if you had any questions, uh, for them before we, we dive into the recommendations. Um, I do like, um, I, I just want to be clear. Um, I've had some of this conversation with them, and if you, if you have the same, um, I would encourage you to explore it. I have some real concerns with the application of the net zero energy appendix because zoning is very much a snapshot in time determination that we have to make. And whenever we are bringing some factor that requires some sort of ongoing maintenance or commitment via a contract or operational decisions, I don't think, in fact, zoning is the best tool to require that. Nonetheless, um, Steve, Chris, I don't know if you want to add anything, uh, to that as well.
One thing I would do, just, just, uh, just, uh, point of clarification, that what we actually referenced is appendix CC that is currently in the, in the Michigan Energy Code. It is based on the IECC, but it actually is a little bit different. So they did have amendments. So, so what we're actually having them references is the appendix CC, which was currently adopted and part of the Michigan Energy Code. But it is part of a, what they call like an unenforceable, uh, appendix, but it is something that, you know, through local ordinance, it can, can be, can be implemented. So it's, it's, it's part of the code. It's in, it's in the code. And, uh, and, and we like it because, uh, you know, we, we feel that we, we do want to keep the 60% so onsite solar, and this appendix CC provides a framework for how these developments can set a target for their energy budget that they have to account for with either, you know, whatever's covered with the 60% solar or with these offsite renewable purchases. Chris, uh, did you have something to add to?
Yeah, I just wanted to say that was a really great summary, Brett. Um, that covers most of the things that we were recommending. One additional thing was a slight change in the definition of what an all electric development is. So right now there's kind of an exception in the definition, um, for, you know, natural gas and propane, propane and diesel fuels to be used as a temporary and secondary source to provide energy in emergency situations. And just another recommendation that we had was to remove that because it kind of encourages gas backup heat, and that's not something that we want to promote. But other than that, that was a really great summary of the recommendations that we had for changes.
And I don't think it's particularly addressed, but I just remind the commission that one of the evolving tension points is, is that there, um, Chris and Steve, and I suspect, I don't want to speak for them, but Mr. Garber would absolutely agree that there is widespread opportunity to electrify all aspects of a building. I'll just remind the commission, you still do hear from some commercial users that they would prefer to keep gas for commercial tenant spaces at times for kitchens and the like. So both, you know, one is to obviously meeting the city's sustainability goals more, but I just, I also want to recognize that you have heard that feedback. I don't think it's come up for a while, but I just, I don't want to lose sight of that, that tension that we've had in the past. Thanks for the space to address, uh, those thoughts. And, uh, I'll leave it to you, Commissioner Abrams, as to where you want to go next.
Great. Thank you. Um, so we can begin our discussion and maybe we should try to, uh, get all of the questions we might have about the sustainability component specifically, like answered first, and then we can let Steve and Chris, uh, who so nicely spent some of their evening with us, go. I think Brett, do you think, or Alexis, right? Does that make sense? Instead of having, yeah, keeping them here for the whole time. So we could start maybe with the sustainability questions and then we can move on to affordability. Uh, yeah, go ahead, Sarah, kick us off. Thanks.
Yeah. So, um, thanks for that. I'm on the sustainability component. I mean, I have lots of thoughts that, um, on geothermal, that, so, so Mr. Leonard said that that was one of your recommendations, adding back in solar, rooftop solar, um, which would go towards the, the zero code appendix.
I just want to be clear, air source or ground source heat pumps were recommended. So I don't know how perfectly equivalent that is to geothermal, but I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Sorry, I wasn't, I wrote that down wrong then, because I was going to say, um, that feels like, um, a specific, like, not just all electric, but this is the specific kind of mechanical system. There's multiple way, like, making sure that I, I'm saying it like I know it, but I, like, I want some confirmation. Yeah. And like, why that versus any other, like, again, is it just because it's a better, um, thing?
Yeah.
We want, yeah. Chris, if you want to have.
Yeah, yeah. So we, our suggestion was to require that, um, you know, a building that's applying for the height exception through the sustainability component, um, utilize air source heat pumps or geothermal, which, um, geothermal uses heat from the ground and air source heat pumps use heat from the air. And that's just because heat pumps are a very efficient type of mechanical equipment, and they can be used in pretty much every situation. And they also have lower embodied carbon compared to other forms of a fully electric mechanical systems. So that's why we had that as a recommendation.
Got it. Okay. Um, and then I hadn't fully realized that the appendix, I mean, I sort of knew that the appendix got added in, but didn't really know it. Um, so in it, I'm looking at it right now, and it appears to have the energy utilization intensity. Um, but I can't, but it's buried in renewable energy, so I'm not 100% sure what, like, I share this idea that we are of a snapshot in time and figuring out procurement. Like, this is really important to me, and I don't want to cut the sustainability component because we can't, there's no other mechanism for us to require electrification. And like, I want to make sure that we have a good enough carrot. And I want to move things towards, towards net zero. And I also see the long-term enforceability. So I'm wondering if this is, I think you, I know, again, enough about EUI to be dangerous. This is getting at the, um, energy efficiency, maybe, that actually if we, we don't have, currently have that as part of our sustainability requirements and the, and the kind of staff looked at that, I'm curious if, if, I don't want to say a compromise, but like, if that gets us towards that, and if you, yeah, now I'm going to stop. But also, Dick, I don't know if you are correcting something that I said.
Well, hold on before Dick or Commissioner Norton, real quick. Sarah, were you saying, what would be the middle ground that you were offering? I, I think I missed that.
That including EUI or some sort of energy efficiency metric, like, building envelope? Like, that is actually, like, I don't want all electric buildings that are leaky. And so I sort, like, is EUI, thus, will that get us there? Because I don't know, I know, I don't know enough about, like, that part of it. And is this the right table to use, or is there some other metric that we should be using?
Okay. Great. Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Norton, thanks for letting me interject there.
Sure. I, um, I'm going to riff off of Sarah a little bit. I think to her first point, if I was hearing you correctly, Sarah, you were suggesting that instead of using the word geothermal, that the more generic term would be air or ground source heat pumps in the definition, because who knows, maybe the technology will change or something, um, right? Is that what I was hearing? So that's the first point. The second point was, did you guys write down the suggestions that Mr. Garber made for changing the definition? Because they made sense to me when he said them, but they, but he went really fast. So I didn't write them down. I was hoping you guys did.
I have them, yeah. I can go over them with you all in a minute.
Okay. And then the third point, so I think if I'm following, um, Mr. Leonard's concern, I, I mean, double check with the city's legal counsel, but I think it's entirely appropriate if we're going to require standards that applicants have to satisfy in order to get a special incentive or bonus that are the kinds of standards that change over time, that it's appropriate to cite to a formally published document where they can change over time as needed be and not put them in the text of the ordinance, our ordinance itself. So I think it's actually, if I'm following this session, if I'm understanding, if you want to add more requirements that, that applicants demonstrate that their buildings are energy efficient and point to the, point to the published state code that establishes that, I think that's an appropriate way to frame our ordinance to get there. Or is that, am I not understanding what you're, what your concerns were?
I think you're in the ballpark, and I don't, I don't want to say that, that, I don't, yeah, I think you're close. But so one of, one of the distinctions that I would suggest that, well, one of the distinctions that we have had difficulty with in the city in the past is when we use zoning, a premium, a sort of voluntary arrangement or something, and it requires some ongoing operational decision that I frankly can't, I can't, I can't sit here with straight face and say that we will be successful in monitoring it and enforcing it over time. Here's an example. We have had in the past, some projects come to the city and say, "We will put solar panels on the building, and we promise that it will cover at least 10% of our energy used on that building." One, absolutely, I can try to do whatever we can to, to pinky promise that that, that building owner send us their energy usage on an annual basis. But after we've given three extra floors of space and their energy usage comes back at 20% instead of 10%, what would you like, as the planning commission, like us to do at that point?
I see. Okay. I was misunderstanding. I see where you're coming at now. I was missing what you were trying to get. Okay.
And, and so, and I don't, I don't want to say that it's a bright line because I, I wouldn't sit here and say that it is a bright line. But I, I will tell you that I, when, whenever we go down these paths, I am thinking about snapshots that I can do at the time I hand you a certificate of occupancy for that building, whether it's, uh, I, I, I don't know what the code is, EUI metric, that at the time of a certificate of occupancy, we have, uh, an architect saying, "I certify that this is an EUI of X instead of Y." If that can happen at a snapshot in time, that's something we can monitor. Another example of this is, we used to have in our premiums, before we modified the premiums, we used to have a requirement for LEED. And what happened was LEED changed over time where some of the LEED certifications required like an ongoing building performance aspect to it. It was no longer a certification at the time of building. And so the same thing applies. We, we, we have, we have granted, permitted, and occupied a building with some attribute that was based on that commitment that, one, it is sometimes challenging to get. And two, I just want to be honest that if it turns out they, they didn't perform that LEED certification, the, the, uh, the likelihood that I'm going to come in there and say, "You now have to remove three stories."
Yeah. Or one and a half stories, because you're only halfway there.
So, so those are just some of the challenges that I see in that appendix. I totally get the desire for improved energy efficiency. I totally get, um, the desire for a more clear electrification definition. But, uh, that's why they're here. You know, I wanted to make sure that you, the commissioners, got both these perspectives because they might, Steve might volunteer to say, "You know what? I'll do it. I promise. I'll go to court. I will, uh, I, you know, there's a lot of questions to answer about that. I am skeptical, but if that's a direction that you want us to go in, we'll pursue those options to see what's possible."
So I guess the, maybe the way I would frame it then is, and this is maybe So I guess the, maybe the way I would frame it then is, and this is maybe a question for Steve and Krista, can you, could, could an applicant produce designs that would comply, if followed through, would get you to where the, where the um, IUE standards are trying to get to? In other words, you're not setting up to do an ongoing, continuous um, monitoring of what they're doing, but you are asking for clear design improvements to the structure that should get you there and that that would be enough to warrant giving, giving the height bonus.
Well, um, I, I know Chris has probably got something to say as well, but just real quick, so first of all, the EUI chart that's in the appendix CC, like, that, that exists. So in, you know, planning and designing, you know, the, the designer has a sense as to, okay, you know, look at my building type, I look at how big it is, I multiply the condition floor area by the EUI and that's gives me my target for, you know, what I need to account for, right? To be net zero, that's what that EUI for, so, so Sarah, if you're asking like, you know, are we looking for numbers, EUIs to maybe reference as a standard? We could start with those numbers and, you know, but, you know, and reduce, you know, maybe think, oh, 20% of that. But that's what that chart is for in this appendix, just to be clear. It's a great start and it's a reference and there, there's other folks that provide, you know, EUIs based on building types we could look at. I get my, my other comment, I would say, um, you know, well, we didn't talk much about LEED certification, but, you know, LEED certification is a way to promote increased, you know, efficiency and above code stuff. But you can also, you know, take control over how we monitor that, that certification. I mean, yes, you're right, there are certain certifications that you have to wait a year till you get the final certification, but that's not to say you can't split the certification at the design phase and at the, you know, at the occupancy phase and then a year afterwards. These are all things that, 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 you know, we, we can do if, if that is something you, you choose to do. Lastly, as far as verification, you're right, that's the sticky wicket on this one. How are we going to make sure they do these things? There are, there is stuff in the appendix that, you know, says stuff like, you know, you gotta have, uh, you have to show your, your 15-year contract commitment for renewables. You have to make that commitment durable if, if that building gets transferred. So there is some language in the appendix that talks about some of the crazy things that could happen in that building and uh, and you know, we'd have to talk about what OSI's role or the building department's role would be in, in verifying and making sure that, you know, these, these agreements are durable and, and being adhered to, but um, you know, I, I don't think, I, I think these are things that if we decide to go to this route, we, we could figure a plan for.
Which, which maybe could include, I'm sorry, Chris, I'm going to jump in ahead of you. Which maybe could include, instead of telling somebody you're going to have to take down a story or two after we've given you approval to build it, you could have a penalty, um, kind of like the, kind of like the Farmland Protection Act. If you sell your property early to, for development and didn't follow the contract of the farmland protection, you owe a whole lot of back taxes that you don't, wouldn't even have to pay. So you could say, we're going to give you the boost and we expect you to hit these standards and if you don't, there's a schedule of penalties that you will now become liable for, that could become the enforcement mechanism to keep developers honest.
And I think it could be easy to calculate those penalties to be both punitive and also just to cover whatever sort of, uh, you know, carbon footprint or carbon, you know, uh, asset that they're not, you know, that they're not covered.
I don't know that I would do it to make them punitive, but I would definitely make it to get back what they said they were going to provide that they're not providing.
Okay, well, understood.
That's, that's my thinking.
Okay.
Uh, I was just gonna add a little bit of clarity, so we have like four different overarching recommendations. The first one is requiring the net zero um, energy requirements in appendix CC, which I think is the one that, that Brett is saying could be hard to verify. We also have three other recommendations that are separate from that. Uh, one is full electrification, the other is onsite solar covering at least 60% of the roof area. Those are both currently recommendations in the sustainability component, so it's just maintaining those and adding a little bit more clarity. Um, and then the fourth one is using air source or ground source heat pumps for onsite conditioning. So Brett, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I think the main one you're concerned about verifying is um, the requirements in appendix CC, which can be met with um, renewable energy that's not onsite, which obviously does make it a little bit harder to, to verify. There are some requirements in the appendix itself about, or some recommendations in the appendix itself about how to verify that, that renewable energy is purchased and that the net zero energy requirements are met. And Steve kind of touched on, on some of those things and I think we could talk through how that could be possible, or maybe it's not possible and we could mix that particular requirement if we don't think that, that it is possible. Um, but I just wanted to make that clarification that there's a few different recommendations going on there.
Yeah, I.
Oh, go ahead, Rob.
I was, I was just gonna add, uh, at, yeah, as, um, and again, I don't want to, I don't want to say that the appendix, please don't think about that off the table. I'm just trying to give you like a, like a bit of an opposing perspective on it. Well, this is just brainstorming, we'll follow up wherever you want. The 60%, I think that's worked fine. Um, I don't have any objections. Like I said, I pulled that out previously based on previous conversations with other staff at the, at OSI. It sounds like that they're thinking on that is evolving and that's, that's fine. Um, my thinking evolves all the time. The only other piece, um, and I, I think this is less of a concern, but I think it's in that same vein. When we are using zoning to specify a mechanical system that similarly is very specific and um, as Commissioner Norton was talking about, unless, and like as that technology increases, I don't sit here and pretend to know that there's going to be something other than ground or heat, or ground or air source heat pumps in the future. But if we are indexing to those, that's something we would have to keep updated. And similarly, um, we would have to have some sort of mechanisms in place to make sure that when that building s- system is updated at some point in history, it's somehow clear that when that permit comes in, that they are not allowed to shift to a different type of technology. I will just, uh, again, we can look to solve these things, but through 25,000 permits a, a year, we won't always catch those mechanicals to make sure that they're right. So again, if that's, but if that's something that's desirable, that's something that we'll take away from this and we'll brainstorm with the building department with OSI and what are the triggers or mechanisms that we can do? Because that's going to add another layer that is going to treat that building a little bit differently than every other building where, you know, we're just going to be reviewing whatever kind of furnace, air conditioning system you're putting in, we're going to make sure it meets code. But we're going to have to somehow flag these to say that these, by the way, your options are limited.
Can I jump in front of Steve real quick and say, you know, maybe the way to think about it is.
I'm gonna cut you off for, I'm gonna cut you off for one second, jump in, um, because in the interest of time and, um, but I would suggest to um, Ellie as chair, um, you know, we typically devote two hours total to a meeting. We do have another agenda topic that I know that you're also gonna um, want to talk about a lot. How, how about a slight straw poll? If we do want to talk further about these details and about some of the ideas that are, my OSI colleagues are talking about, or do we want to stick with the boring, just all electric building? And if we want to um, explore more detail, we'll totally do that. Um, and we can focus on that. I think then the best thing is for Brett and I to work with OSI, come back with either one or a couple of choices to then, to then vet. But in the interest of time, um, we might want to keep it rolling a bit.
Yeah, I, I would love to just have a chance to ask a couple of questions before we let Steve and Krista go.
Okay.
But I think, Steve, I think you are um, wanting to chime in. No, okay.
Let's keep her moving.
Okay, so um, I guess, so this is not my area of expertise, so I'm wondering, maybe you all can help me. It seems like what Commissioner Mills was proposing is the possibility that there's a metric, a performance standard. So we're not tying, tied to a specific techno, technology or a particular mechanical system or a particular thing, but we're tied to a performance standard. And I just wondered, could I take your temperature on that? Is that prom, is there promise there or is there a reason why that's not something we could consider? Yeah, Karissa.
Um, so specifically, EUI um, relates to energy efficiency alone. So if we just had an EUI requirement that would only, you know, cover energy efficiency and not things like onsite renewables.
No, no, sorry, I was thinking, I was thinking of EUI instead of air ground source heat pumps and net zero energy code requirement. So you'd still have the 60% solar and the electrification and then you would have a performance standard. Does that suite of things work or no?
Um, it's kind of the same thing, because appendix CC um, requires, you know, net zero energy. So it also has additional requirements for renewable energy in addition to encouraging energy efficiency. So it has like both of those aspects versus EUI just has the energy efficiency aspect to it. And then same thing with ground source um, or air source heat pumps. You know, that addresses energy efficiency, but also embodied carbon, which EUI doesn't measure. We, we could explore something like that. But we just might need to think about like additional metrics in addition to EUI that we would look at. Um, another thing that I'm thinking is it could be hard to verify EUI. I don't know a whole lot about this, but I think that's something that the architect would need to, to tell us and verify for us. So it'd just be a little bit tougher to really vet.
Yeah. Um, and then my other question.
I'd like, could I follow up on her comment real quick with something? Uh, just to say, I, I, I do have to say, if we are talking about ways we want to have a performance standard, certifications are something I think we could also at least consider looking at. And uh, you know, yeah, and if, whatever issues folks have with them, I've got plenty of uh, responses. So I think if that's what we're talking, then I think we do almost do need to talk about um, certifications, Energy Star, LEED, whatever.
Okay. Um, and then my other question was, uh, well, it was related, so um, Commissioner Norton, you asked about um, Mr. Garber's suggestions and his, two of his suggestions related to the last sentence, which is about um, using fossil fuels as backup generation or temporary secondary sources in emergency situations. So Mr. Garber's suggestion was that you don't, you don't say emergency situations in the generic, but you say outage. You're specific, right? That's just for a power outage. And the other thing is that he was suggesting, I hope I'm not making a mistake here, that we say specifically that people can only install gas generators when required by fire code. But Karissa, you also said something about this last sentence and maybe you just suggested that we delete it completely so that there's no provision for fossil fuel backup for outages. Is that, I just want to make sure that I didn't misunderstand what you were suggesting.
Yeah, that's correct. Um, you know, if you have that renewable energy requirement, they could add battery storage to have energy during outages. But we've seen a lot of case study examples of buildings that are fully electric without gas backup. And, you know, it works, so.
Yeah, okay. Um, Commissioner Adams, I just want to make sure before we.
I don't have any, I don't have any questions for OSI. I have questions for planning staff.
Okay, um. Alexis, you wanted us to maybe do a straw poll of like fork in the road here, just so you know what net, what to work on and come back to us with.
Um, for sure. Sounds like, um, you know, there's thoughts and I welcome those thoughts. I don't expect, I don't expect though, like, um, um, we'll need a couple, a couple iterations of this. And I'm happy to do it and work with my colleagues, just which, yeah, right, left, up, down. And, and we'll um, come back with some options, alternatives, pros and cons. We'll work a little bit more.
Okay, so maybe Commissioner Norton and then maybe we can do a bit of a taking the temperature.
Just one more question. Um, you're focusing on we should require electricity, but really the main concern is to not use fossil fuels, right? So couldn't you say we, we need, you can power buildings with anything but fossil fuels and satisfy this? And then that kind of opens the door to new technologies, who knows what that might come along and not try and anticipate them and write them into the code. Could we, could you approach it that way? And I'll just throw that on the table and maybe as you guys are noodling it, think about that, taking that approach. What are we trying to not use rather than anticipate all of the things that we could use instead? Just a thought.
Okay, so um, planning staff, yeah, Commissioner Adams.
Just to be, just to be, are we gonna, are we gonna have an opportunity to talk to planning staff about this proposal or are we just?
The sustainability component?
About the proposal, like this, the proposal to change the, how the definitions, like the, I was, I was referring to the the policy judgments and the staff memo and the entire basis for this initiative. I wasn't referring to any of the details around it, the sustainability.
Um, sure. Why don't we, does anybody, are there any lingering questions for Steve or Karissa? All right, then I think we can let you go and enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you so much. We appreciate your time.
Thanks for having us here.
Thanks. Oh, you were muted, Steve, if you were saying.
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I, I might, I, I got another, I might, I might stick right, I, I'm, I'm fascinated by the, by the process, so I might just stick right till I get completely bored.
You're welcome to. Yeah, yeah, yeah. I don't mean to exile you. It was, it was more of just letting you go. Okay. All right, Commissioner Adams.
So I have two questions, um, and some comments. I had some pretty strong reactions to this, but I wanted to make sure that I um, heard Alexis clearly earlier on. So my, my two questions were, I feel, did, did you mention that you wanted to get this into the plan? Is that what I heard you, no?
No, I think city council wanted us to make sure, to get into the plan that the height limits are limited to non-residential zones. But Alexis is saying, we're kind, we're going to kind of move a little quicker than that and maybe update this ordinance before that, that implementation of that little bit in the plan. Because this is something we've been thinking about already anyway.
Yeah. Um, and then the other question I had, there's, there's some passive voice upfront about concerns are now being raised. Criticism has been focused on developments in downtown, some feel, who are we talking about?
Um, Mr. Garber for one, um, has been an advocate, but I feel that um, if you go back and look at some of the public comment record. Now, we don't, we, it's not like we have hundreds of people, but um, um, I believe, and Brett can chime in if he's right, um, but some of our public commentary, um, right at hearings or commentary for site plan projects downtown. And I think it's, it's starting to be echoed by some council members.
Yeah, I think, I, I think we have heard from public, from uh, council members, we've also, I think, heard from your colleagues, some of your colleague commissioners, I think there's a reference to Commissioner Lee. I think generally that there, my perception is that the community sees the affordability housing component and the sustainability housing component as much different water levels to achieve in order to get to the same result. And I think, um, I think that there's probably a lot of opinions about what, what should we do about that? One, is it okay? Two, should we, uh, I think generally the perception is if the sustainability component is easier to attain than committing 15% of your units to affordable housing. And so I think this is an intention to generally react to some of those anecdotes, those public comments that we've heard to say, this is one way that we think we could equalize these. That's where we started. Um, and then when we started looking at the, how they've been used, the affordability one really has been used by mission-based affordable housing developers. And so um, frankly, we sort of thought this was an opportunity to provide some flexibility to those providers rather than necessarily trying to equalize the, some magical quantifiable value of each of these applied to a hypothetical project.
Okay, um, I mean, I, I think, and I'm, um, in an effort to be direct and not beat around the bush, I mean, I, I had serious concerns about this. I mean, I think that in, in no, in no particular order, um, I think it's, I think it's premature. I mean, that, let me start there. So I think it's possible that once we get, once we get into the world of tackling hub and transition, from taking that from a concept into execution, we will say, all right, well, here's where the line should be, but we will, we, we think as a policy judgment, we can go higher if certain conditions are met. It's possible we will go in that direction. But it feels awkward for me to start now having the discussion around changing the criteria for a, a height bonus around categories that we intend to start. changing in potentially sort of short to medium order. I, I also don't, and again, just to be direct, I don't, I don't think I agree with the premises of the memo. I don't think there's a priority at the time, priority right now for us to be limiting taller buildings, which is how I read these proposals. So if anything, I think the policy judgments in the draft plan cut in the opposite direction. And also a lot of the public feedback we've got gotten to date cuts in the opposite direction, that the sensitivity from a public perspective is around the height limits in residential. And that point of view is buttressed by the feedback that we've received from city council, which to date has been entirely focused on the heights in residential. And we've acted on that feedback. But acting on that feedback means the housing's got to go somewhere. So I'm looking at hub primarily and saying, we need to be building taller. And these proposals to me, by constraining the number of projects that are going to be able to qualify for something taller, that's going in the opposite direction of, I think, what's implicit in our public comment, what's our direction from council, the feedback that we've gotten. And I think the policy direction that we've spent the last year or so baking into the, the plan. At the end of the day, our housing crisis is what's paying for these sustainability features, right? Like we're, we're trying to build a plan that over time solves for the housing crisis. It makes it possible to find housing and to build housing. If housing isn't scarce, I'm not sure how these, these exceptions work. Developers aren't going to agree to do any of these things if they can build housing that the market demands. That's where we're trying to go. So it feels again awkward and maybe out of step for me to think about, let's ratchet down the universe of projects that qualify when we've spent the last year trying to design a plan that hopefully meets the housing needs of the community. And if we're doing that, developers aren't going to do these extra things. They're doing them now because that's the only way they get these projects to a certain height, how they get to the pencil, that type of thing. The other reaction that I had is that I couldn't quite square the recommendations with the the new approach to economic development report and the economic development resolutions, which direct the, you know, permissive standards for the development of housing as much as feasible. This really does the opposite of that. It's layering new regulatory requirements on top of these height bonuses. And again, I think that the July resolution that's referenced in the memo related to residential. And it related to the removal of these, the complete removal of these height exceptions for residential, not the revision of them, the removal of them for residential, which we put into the plan. So again, going back to like, where am I building housing? Council's focus and the public's criticism and concern seems real focused on that residential category. So we acted on that and we, we, we came back from something more permissive and taller. But then I'm looking to hub and saying, that's where I've got to build. So I'm not really, again, from a timing perspective, but also as a policy judgment, I don't think I'm on board with this.
Thanks, Commissioner Norton. And then I would like to maybe chime in for a sec and then we'll go to Commissioner Mills if you want to. Oh, you're muted.
Okay, thank you. Now I'm going to riff just for a minute on Commissioner Adams' thoughts. I think you use these kinds of incentive bonuses for two different distinct reasons. One is you're artificially constraining development in some sense, but then lifting a constraint in order to get the developer to provide some other kind of socially beneficial thing they wouldn't otherwise provide, which I think is kind of the, we can't compel them to do sustainability stuff. So here's an opportunity to try and get them to do them. The other way to use them is to say there's a, there's a reason we're putting a constraint here. We're willing to lift it a bit. If the release we're giving makes it feasible for you to add things to your project and still make money. So it's a little bit more focused on, now the question is how much do we raise the ability for you to add floors in order to make what we want to have happen economically feasible for you? Not that we're constraining the development so we can get something out of you that we wouldn't otherwise get, right? There's two philosophical reasons here and it's not clear to me which one of those we're going after. And I think that speaks then to how you structure the arrangement. So, so maybe along with Commissioner Adams, especially since we are moving in the direction of really lifting height limits, at least in parts of the city, why would we turn around and constrain them in order to put in requirements to allow them to be increased again? I see the logic of the critique that he's, he's leveling there. I will say, I've, we've definitely heard people complaining about all the skyscrapers going in downtown too. So it's not, it's not, I think folks are mostly worried in the residential districts, but there's certainly some folks who are unhappy just with tall buildings in the city overall as well. So that, we have heard that feedback. So I may be muddling things a little bit more, but I think there are some philosophical questions about how, what are we trying to do here through these regulations that probably should be talked through a little bit more as well. Thank you.
Commissioner Norton, I just wanted to respond quickly to your comments, Commissioner Adams. I, I agree with everything you're saying. I think that the difference, my difference of opinion, it comes from just like thinking about the reality of the timeline. So the ideas that you're saying about hub and transition and the ways in which we might think about height limits or the desire to throttle light in those districts because we are doing it in the residential district. All of that I agree with. I just think that that's something that's like three to four years down the road. And in the meantime, what we're seeing is a whole bunch of development that is getting quite a bit of additional height without really having to offer anything up or, or like using that extra, I mean, maybe to put it in your framework, Commissioner Norton, like the extra, you know, revenue that that provides isn't being, isn't enhancing the sustainability or the social kind of benefit of.
The revenue should calibrate till they invest.
Yeah. So it's like, I don't, we aren't, we aren't limiting taller buildings. We're, the, the limits already exist. And this, this mechanism already exists. It just seems like an easy thing we could do, which is get something which actually makes, has a kind of sustainable impact in exchange for this height that we already are, have agreed is acceptable in certain cases. So I guess I see it kind. I guess I don't, for me, it doesn't feel premature, only in that I don't want to wait, I don't want to have four more years of 30% height bonuses being offered for, you know, electric capacity, but not actually electric buildings. So, but I will say that everything you said, Commissioner Adams, makes me think that maybe a more simplified, like a kind of improved, but still simplified version of this that isn't producing, as you're saying, more kind of regulatory hurdles and more barriers to getting your entitlements and stuff. As per the economic development report, maybe that convinces me that we could make a couple of changes, but they're simple. So it's clarifying what all electric means, keeping the solar component and maybe thinking about something like the appendix CC or some other criteria as a future, something to think about in the future. So. Yeah. Commissioner Mills, do you want to jump in? If not, I have a question for Brett and Alexis.
I think that you guys have covered, like I'm torn because I think the timing is one of the questions that I have. These, I think what we're talking about could, could, well, obviously we're talking about it before any other changes to zoning that might come out of the comp plan. But I'm imagining that we still might want to incentivize even above and beyond the new height limits that we offer up for the kinds of things that the market is not providing, that I think are providing other other benefits. And so, but I, I don't know, I don't know how I feel about the timing. But I do want them to be meaningful. And, and my, just, just my observation is we're making sustainability, we're making both sustainability and the affordability both harder, it feels like. And like that, given the imbalance now, like I was kind of curious about why. I understand actually the rationale for the affordability, that this mix of units in an otherwise market rate thing may make those units hard to actually get people into. And so I, I, I could totally be on board with that, but I know more about the sustainability side of things than the affordability side of things. And that's why like, I'm curious what the affordability folks have to say about that. So that's just more saying like, yeah, I think it's, the timing is complicated. And I want to see there are some kind of buildings that we're not getting necessarily in the city. And, and so I think having an incentive for them is important.
Yeah, maybe just two other small comments. One is when we're talking about number three, reducing applicability of exceptions. I think that this would be fine for now, but just flagging that in in the near future, there's, we, all, all districts will be mixed use. So we'll have to be more specific in the language there about residential use or resident, you know, something else.
Good news, Commissioner Abrams, there are going to be a thousand little references like that you're going to have to wrestle with.
Great. Okay. And then my other thing, maybe going back to what Commissioner Mills was just saying about affordable housing one is did you have a conversation about keeping payment in lieu and as an option? So all affordable units, if you're doing it in units or a payment in lieu option for people who want to pay?
We did not have that conversation this time because we have talked a lot about, about it. And one of the strong criticisms is if, when you allow payment in lieu, you're allowing people to buy building size, building mass, you're allowing them to buy height. And so it's what, I mean, and in that case, you should just raise the height limit. So, but it's, yeah, I mean.
We're getting money we can use to build affordable housing, right?
I mean, you are. The projects also. Pay into the affordable housing fund anyway, like base, every single project does. But that, that's it right there. Like the, the more you lean into allowing payment in lieu, the more you are just allowing, saying, give us money, we will buy our increased height.
Or we will, we'll fund the construction of affordable housing units for our height.
State law, state law gets dicey with that.
No, 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 I know, but I'm just saying conceptually that's.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's, I mean, that's the concept for sure. Concept is right, but we're not, there's no equation between, we're going to fund these units, we're, we're going to fund units over here, we're going to foot the bill for them. It's just here, give us, like, so I think that maybe it needs to be tightened if we're going to do payment in lieu. Maybe it just needs to be tightened, like to actually realize those offsite units.
But nobody has done it, right? Nobody has done the 15% payment in lieu in order to get the height.
Not, no, because I think that the exception to high limit is a little bit too new. It was heavily used when, when premium floor area was offered. It's also heavily used in plan unit developments.
Okay. So we're approaching, we're after eight o'clock and we have another item on our agenda. So maybe just.
So, yeah, yeah. So I'm hearing, I'm hearing some consternation about making these standards more higher, more challenging to reach. But I am also hearing voices that we should make them more challenging to reach because our current standards don't really give us anything. I guess with all due respect to the voices, I, I am hearing more interested in, in looking at the options to make the requirements more stringent. So I think our takeaway is to explore the tight rope of how do we make that standard more meaningful while making it enforceable? While perhaps at this juncture, in the context of a comprehensive plan in the final stages of adoption and a lot of work ahead, maybe perhaps focus on more refinements rather than wholesale changes to this framework.
Yeah, I mean, yes, I, I think that's right. I think maybe one other way I would just frame it is we have to thread the needle because what we want is we want people to, to take advantage of this. And then we get more housing and more sustainability. If we make it so stringent that nobody does it, we get gas, right? We get fossil fuel burning fewer units. That's like the worst case scenario. So.
And that's always the challenge with premiums. It's, we here at the city have always tried and we have missed more often than we've hit it.
But my sense, and if I'm wrong, is that enough projects have taken advantage of the sustainability component to give us, to send a message to us that this is something that is appealing. And we're trying to see, can we get a more, a little more?
Yeah.
And not, and not kill it, right?
Yeah. And Alexis, if, if Alexis was sitting next to me would gently elbow me and remind me not to use the word premium. This is something that if you perform X, you get Y. So I just want to be clear. It's not, there's no discretion to this approval.
Right, right.
Okay, Alexis, I, do you feel like you have some semblance of a couple of steps forward?
Absolutely.
All right.
Next messaging, but.
Okay. Well, this other one should be pretty simple.
Okay.
The next up is proposed amendments to chapter 55 related to site plan approval authority and content. So again, like Alexis mentioned, there's a memorandum included in the packet for anybody who's interested. You, it, you will see some consistent introduction. This is again, talking about the new approach to economic development that was accepted by the city council. And then subsequent to that, city council enacted four resolutions based on some of the content of that report, directing the city administrator and staff to undertake a series of steps. This is, the memo that I've included is another batch of steps that were included in the housing housing development for all income levels focused resolution. It didn't, and I've highlighted a couple of those specific callouts that the resolution included. Direct the separation of the site plan and land improvement or civil plan process as much as feasible with the following guidance, that site plan requirements be amended to significantly lower the amount of engineering plans that are required for submission as part of site plan approval process. B is something we're already focusing on operationally, just to bring things to you frankly, less developed and more opportunity for you to make approvals with conditions. C, the planning commission, or D of that same sections, B and C are very, B and C are very related just operationally. D, pursue modifications to the unified development code that expand the categories and scope of site plan modifications that may be considered with planning manager approval. Some of you might remember in 2021, we made some big changes to this. Previously, there was a whole category of site plans, even if they were permitted uses, they still went to city council. That was changed. So only those city site, site plans that are accompanying a legislative action progress to city council. Number three out of that resolution modified the unified development code to expand the categories and extended development that do not require site plan review and corresponding site improvements such as traffic safety, solid waste standards, stormwater, outdoor lighting, et cetera. And then pursue amendments to the approval matrix that more categories of work, not only which improvements can improve by which body, but which improvements require are which improvements thresholds are going to apply comprehensively to sites might apply to a fraction of the site only to a disturbed area. And so there's a lot of intertwining of some of these, which is, I think frankly, is some of the reasons why I initiated some of the other ones first, because some of the other ones, I think were more independently discussable. But I'm sure that there are other aspects of this, but I've tried to lay out sort of three categories of how I think we need to look at the UDC in order to tackle these particular recommendations. One, I've just generally called applicability. And attached to this, I think attachment A to this memo is just sort of a staff generated summary, our words of how each development standard section of the unified development code applies to projects. And what you're going to find is a lot of differing areas. Some of that happens because even though we have polished up our zoning code in 2018 into this UDC, it is largely a 1963 zoning ordinance at its, at its sort of foundation. Alexis, also having such a great knowledge of the history and evolution of this also reminds me, not only do some of knowledge of the history and evolution of this also reminds me, not only do some of the individual sections of how outdoor lighting or signage or parking, not only do those have distinct applicability language because of some of them being developed over different times, but some of those sections were actually in totally different chapters of our code prior to the UDC. We had a different site plan code, we had a different prohibited uses code, we had different land natural features code, I think. So we had a lot of different areas, and so some of those sections just never had applicability. And applicability is really foundational because it helps us and to communicate with property owners and developers, this is what's going to be expected to you when you come into us under what threshold. So that's one category that we need to look at, and I've got a couple of general questions here. The second category of this is approving body standards, and this is what we as staff and customers spend a lot of time having conversations about is where does your project fall on that site plan review table? Even though it's been evolved and amended over time, there's still opportunities for interpretation on that table. And so not only have we correctly have we correctly listed and categorized described projects so we can easily slot what somebody wants to do into one of those. But who should make the determination when that site plan is complete? Should it be the planning manager, which is administrative review, or should it be the planning commission? And then finally, required plan information. So this is obviously really core to the recommendation to start reducing some of the engineering standards that are applicable to reviews. And over time, we have been very additive with our ordinance, we've talked at different times about sort of unzoning. We are very good, and most communities frankly are very good at adding regulations in the context of some new use or new challenge or some new opportunity. And so part of that over time is we have we have built up a very robust require set of requirements for you to submit a site plan to us. And those standards generally apply whether it's a site plan for planning manager approval or something that's gonna go all the way to city council with a plan unit development approval. And so part of the response to these resolutions is unpacking some of those standards and say, what could we live without? And so that's this third category. So for each of these, as I said, I've just got like a couple of high level questions that I'd love to brainstorm, get some feedback to kind of shape how we proceed with looking at some of this. You might have other questions you might want to bring up, I've got a couple of other thoughts, but unless you have any questions, Commissioner Abrams, maybe we could just start with the applicability feedback loop and so like I said, we've got a lot of different standards about when things apply. Things like use sort of always apply, like when we are asked, ask, when we are looking at a zoning permit or a site plan, we of course look at whether the use is appropriate within the zoning district. Then there are other standards that have been added more recently that have really diff really distinct application standards. For example, EV parking, when we first added EV parking, we actually required that all parking would have to meet EV parking. And so what that meant is if you had a two hundred parking space lot and you wanted to build ten more spaces, you had to meet the requirements for two hundred and ten parking spaces and whatever percentage of those were the EV lots. We started getting a couple of variance applications, those variances were granted, so we actually came back and modified that to say, no, we're only gonna apply those standards to the provision of new parking. Another example of that is outdoor lighting. Within the last couple of years, we modified our outdoor lighting ordinance to required shielded fixtures, we specify very specific lighting temperatures. And that is broadly applied. If you are, say, you're just adding garages to a senior living facility in town, you're going to have to then also upgrade all of the outdoor lighting on the site to comply with that ordinance, even though you might not have been addressing any of that. A more recent example that we have sort of before us right now is we have a private country club that would like to make some is considering some improvements to their facilities. But based on our site plan standards, we require natural features assessment of the entirety of their golf course. They have no intention to make any changes to their golf course, so. So is there, from your perspective, a benefit to despite differing impacts, differing costs to sort of standardize or provide more consistent triggers and thresholds to these development standards? And by that, I mean, when do you have to comply with those ordinances and what proportion of your site has to comply with those ordinances?
Thanks, Alexis, earlier you had your hand up, do you want to chime in before we go to Commissioner Adams?
No, I don't, no.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Adams, you want to kick us off?
I guess my feedback on that, Brett, would be I'd be very reluctant to mess with any of that. Especially after hearing your your backstory on how some of those triggers are a product of you of staff and council detecting friction points, pain points, policy pushback. And then arriving at a as a at a resolution that resolves the issue. It it feels like there's a lot of that baked into an old document and I'd be very reluctant to mess with it. You know, the life of the law is not logic, it's experience, and I'm gonna ask Commissioner Norton not to roll his eyes when I just said that.
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Norton.
That that's a very famous quote. My very famous justice. My thinking would be to step back and think about what's the whole purpose of site plan approval in the first place? And and the main reason for site plan approval is to, and it's an enforcement mechanism to make sure that people are complying with the right standard. So if the site plan approval process is itself becoming too burdensome, maybe that's because we're adding things to site plan approval that is above and beyond what's needed to ensure compliance with the applicable rules. So we're kind of using this advantage, taking advantage of this review opportunity to ask for a whole lot more than what we really need. Or it's suggesting that the requirements that we've put in place are just too onerous themselves, and those are two distinctly fundamentally different things. So I'm trying to understand, it kind of sounds to me like, Brett, with the examples you're giving, that site plan approval has become a mechanism to maybe get a little bit more out of property owners or than what a straight up reading of the ordinance requirements would be. And if that's the case, then those would be the places that I would say, okay, then trim back on the site plan requirements. If in fact, no, there are actually requirements people have to comply with and we take them out of site plan approval, then how are we gonna be sure people are complying with them? And if it turns out we don't really, those aren't so important after all, then maybe we need to go back and take out the requirements themselves, see what the logic I'm trying to lay out here.
I do, I I think about it in that way, and I think I think to both Commissioner Adams and what you're saying, Commissioner Norton, there is, there is a legacy of how we got to where we are because we've to continue your lawyerly stuff, we've sort of as community litigated where the balance is for those things, right? That's not always shared by petitioners, of course. I think the other piece of it, though, is I I think that the decisions we make here is broadly policy decisions, they are at times, how quickly or how slowly do we want to realize new standards? So we we have the ability to use site plan as an enforcement tool to have very little impact on the majority of a site and limit the scale of that review to ensure compliance with just a small portion of it. That is a policy statement that if we go in that direction, we're giving up the opportunity to sort of uncapped that site or to touch the balance of that site and make some incremental improvements on outdoor lighting, on stormwater, et cetera. And so I think you're right, the how you frame that, I think, is a hundred percent right, but I think also within that, and maybe just another way of saying that is how much do we want to try and pull those sites in because that's, this is our future, our future is sites that exist and they want to change, modify or re reimagine. And so we are have, we have very little opportunities to take like the vacant lot and apply these standards cleanly. So we're always gonna be have to be facing like, this site wants to change in this significant or incremental or wholesale way. But frankly, as of late, we get a lot more change than wholesale new. And so, so I think, again, with it, just within that is, what is our expectation? How quickly do we want to realize EV benefits? Outdoor lighting, dark sky compliance, name the other development standard.
So the, so in other words, the code is quiet on whether or not adding a couple parking spaces should trip, having to provide EV spots for the whole development. And so we're kind of trying to figure that out through the way we apply the site plan approval process.
It's not silent, my point is is that it's different. How we how we apply that question to EV is different than how we apply it to stormwater, which is different than how we apply it to outdoor lighting.
Yeah, building on what Brett said, though, right, it's exactly, it's not silent, but the thresholds wildly vary. And so it's not a hard lift to add, when you're adding three new parking spaces to make one of them an EV an EV space. But when you are, all you're doing is putting a canopy over your front entryway, the code says the entire site must comply with dark sky with our outdoor lighting ordinance. They're not proportional whatsoever. One, one section of the code says, you know, you just might need to survey the area fifty feet from your from your your scope of work, and the other section of code is border to border full of things. So there's a lot of disparity, you can tell the era that something was written, you can also tell somebody was, somebody was trying to be very aggressive with that section of code and and other committees, commissions, councils were trying to be very soft.
That's not a problem, yeah, it's not really a problem with site plan approval so much as the site plan approval process is highlighting all of these disparities across the code that are making it hard to be consistent.
Yeah.
And I think, yeah, and I think it's hard for users.
All right, Commissioner Mills.
I think I I keep on having mixed thoughts. In part, because what's that?
You gotta pick a side, Sarah.
I know, and well, this is the thing, I was on the outdoor lighting thing, right? And the idea is most of these fixtures are not, it's not adding a huge expense. And it's not something that sometimes people don't even go in and pull permits like they should for it. And so like the sense was, you gotta take it while you can because it's not a big deal and and uh a lot of our built infrastructure, right? Like we have what we have, and so like, we don't want the terrible lights forever. And so I think that so I'm sensitive to that, like, I know where that's, I know, I was on that committee, like, I know where that's coming from. And also, like, there's not, the, some of these things don't come with an equal price tag. Right? And so I think that's something else that we need to be weighing. I think the idea of having vastly different points, percentages of land, amount of the site, like, that seems weird. And so I think that there's some, it would, in my mind, it would be easier if we had similar, like, here's the list of things that always apply. Here are the list of things that only apply to the part that you're dealing with, like, and that those are the two categories, not like a mix and match. I feel like that level of consistency might go a long way. And then I think you, it requires the conversation about like, which is the thing that we do actually think we want to phase out? A lot of this stuff is about phasing out or maybe phasing in faster. And and kind of balancing that with cost, because the other thing that the reason that I'm like torn is that I've we don't want properties to be so disincentivized to evolve that our only feasible option over time is like a complete teardown and complete redo. I don't know that that is actually in our best interest, and if we're, if there's too many of the things in the like, if you want to do anything, you gotta do everything. Then it, I think that that is what it, I worry that that's what it might lead to. And so I think I would like to have a more of a conversation, but I like I also, I don't know that this is our biggest problem, like, in the site plan, I think that the net, the next two things are bigger, more impact in terms of cost cutting than this issue. So of the, of the, of the three issues, I think this would be my lowest of the three priorities. But I do, I do recognize the lack of consistency.
Commissioner Norton.
Yeah, so you're striking a balance between not wanting to grandfather something in forever because you don't want to force someone to come up to speed on the one hand versus you don't want to necessarily force everybody to come up to speed immediately, especially if that kills projects that you want to move forward. So those are the two boundaries. It seems to me that staff probably have a really good idea where it makes sense and where it doesn't. I, it's really hard for me to kind of go through this long list of things and say, well, here's where you should do it this way, and here's where you should do it the other. But I'm guessing you guys who deal with this stuff all the time would have a much better bead on what are the things where it does make sense to allow a bit of grandfathering and where are the things where it's pretty easy to get up to speed? And so I would suggest maybe if you guys could do that to kind of start working through the logic of it that way would be a fruitful way to proceed.
I'm, I'm great with that, if the rest of the commission, I think that's a good direction. What I'm hearing is, no, don't worry so much about them all being the same for the sake of them being the same, but at a minimum, try to categorize them so that there's maybe more consistency than there exists.
There's a logic to it.
Yeah, I think even just seeing a list of these things are immediate and always, and these things are contingent. And here are the contingent, here are the factors we consider in the contingency. But I also, when I look at that list, feel like outdoor lighting might be the only one worth changing, I mean, maybe I'm missing something, but like signs, I think it's fine, fences seems fine. So I don't know, if you have other specific proposals of ones to change to bring more consistency, then maybe that would be helpful to just hear directly, yeah.
Yeah, I could see curb cuts be another one. That's, I think that's another one where it's like the, they're they're triggered relatively quickly. And the the scale of development might not be generally there, but then it's a big potential benefit if we can get like a curb cut converted to a barrier free configuration or something like that, or reduced in size. So, yeah, I, that's great, let's, let's go to the approving body standards. So this is the, like I said, this is the table where I think a lot of a lot of ordinances are dog-eared and sworn at. What are your, what are your thoughts to approach some changes? So the city council direction is one, move more so that they're administratively approved and consider the categories of those. A couple of things to just think about. Are the current categories in the right places? And if not, how would you start thinking about those? One thing I put on here is site plan still remains an administrative function, we could take the next step and move, and instead of moving all permitted you site plans from to planning commission, they could all be done administratively, which would focus all of your efforts on ordinance changes and planning and rezoning recommendations and the like. Or there's a lot of ways that different communities sort of organize that left-hand column of that table, and maybe that's not the right thing, maybe we should sort of restart that. A lot of those things, again, I have evolved over time. And so maybe, maybe we want to start thinking about how we just categorize development differently. Maybe it's, is it a residential development, is it a commercial development? Is it a over, is it over four stories? So those are just some brainstorming questions that I'd love to get some idea ideation from so that we, I could work on maybe some next steps, some examples, some scenarios.
So I have some thoughts on that, too, if I can jump in. So, yeah, site plan approval is an enforcement mechanism and it's administrative, but it's also the true, it's the case that administrative decisions kind of go from really ministerial, like checkbox, you did it or you didn't, you get your permit, to things that have more of a discretionary element to them, there may be multiple ways you can satisfy a standard. I think, to my mind, the things that are really pretty clearly ministerial where you either do it or you don't are the things that really readily should be more, could be approved by manager or delegate, the thing, delegate. The things where there's some discretion and you could get, you could satisfy the you could satisfy the requirement maybe in different ways and there's room to think about it. That's where having the planning commission or a group kind of noodle through it makes more sense. So, so it seems to me that the level of review, I mean, other than the PUD, which is a legislative change, which the city council should be in charge of, for the administrative decisions that are more, that have some more discretionary element to it, those are the ones that more lend themselves to more of a commission level review. But for anything that's pretty clearly a ministerial administrative decision, I would put those into the, into the manager bucket. Does that make sense? That's the logic I would use.
Commissioner Adams.
Yeah, I, I completely agree with what Commissioner Norton just said. And the only thing I would add is that I'd rather most of our time, more of our time be focused on ordinance changes and that type of thing, uh, you know, to these, you know, rezonings and other things that have to come through the process obviously as well. Um, a lot of the site plans that come in for approval, I often find myself looking at the staff report and it, it does in a lot of cases feel very, you know, objective, check the box type analysis. And I find myself deferring to staff quite a bit in, in those contexts. And I think wherever, wherever I'm doing that, I'm always thinking to myself, well, this should just be a fully administrative, staff managed process and, which not only frees our time up, but I think it frees your time up too, because you're not, you're not preparing as many reports for us and you're not supporting that, that discussion around something that by and large, we're deferring to your judgment on and expertise.
I think, thank you, Commissioner Adams. Uh, let's just remember that one thing that gets removed when we move things from a P to an M in this chart is any public comment or feedback, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I, I'm, I'm, I'm presenting that to us in a kind of value neutral way right now, but I, I don't think it's value neutral. So um, yeah, Commissioner Adams, is your hand to back up?
Yeah, just real quick. I mean, I, I thought, I contemplated that. This gets back to my thing. Well, it's not my thing. Um, other people have brought it up, councils brought it up. I don't think there's, I think there's actually negative uh, from a, from a participatory democratic access voice, whatever you want to call it, point of view. Giving people the impression that we have discretion over something that we don't have discretion over is bad. Like I, and I, and I think that in a lot of cases, these site plans that come through, people show up and they're mad. And we've had this happen where people, they start wanting to dialogue with us and they're frustrated and I get it. And I think we've given people um, back to Commissioner Norton's point, when it, when there is discretion around at least whether we've met a certain criteria um, on a, on a site plan, then at least there's some, something for us to do there, at least in looking at the work and making sure it's right. And it makes sense why we might, might want to let the public in to say, well, wait a minute, they're saying this and that standard requires this and they haven't met it. Um, but for a lot of these, it's, it's not discretionary at all. And I, I worry that we're giving people the false, that false impression.
Yeah. And I would say, I think two other things though, that the public comment do that, and this may not be enough to merit keeping it for a lot of these projects, but uh, it, one, it's, it's a way that we know what's happening. So maybe there's another mechanism by which we could learn what's happening as a body, I mean. And two, I think we, we actually learn a lot about general, general feedback, both from petitioners and from the public about these developments in the process of hearing the comment, asking questions of the petitioner. So I, I, it's imperfect. I understand that, but I still think there is the value there. Um, and then real quick, Commissioner Mills, and then I'll, I will um, seed. But I, if the goal Brett is to move Ps to Ms, right? Is that the goal? Like in a crude way?
Uh, yeah.
We're looking for Ps that could be Ms?
Pursue modifications. So do you see that expand the categories and scope of site plan modifications that can be, may be considered with planning manager approval?
Okay. Um, I think there are a lot of Ps that could, that could move to Ms. Like all, just, I just want to say that. So I would, I think there's a lot of, of stuff here we have, can work with. Yeah, Commissioner Mills.
I agree that anything without real discretion, I would think, I think that it's better if it is manager approval. And if we make this change, I am going to be the squeaky wheel on the gigantic signs that say anything. I, I think that that's our opportunity, actually. Anything where there's a site plan or that's on this at all, I think needs a big sign. People can come and speak at planning commission because there's always the planning man, like the planning manager or their delegate is there to have us know what they feel about that project. Um, I think that that is increasingly important. I think that that is what, and it's, it'll be very clear that we, like, this is, I, that sign can be very clear that there's not discretion here. So long as it meets all the criteria, it shall be approved. And there is a mechanism to come and comment. Just generally, and I would hope actually that that is something that some folks, maybe even some on this call, take us up on. So the, to your point, I do think it's helpful that we know what's going on. Um, how much different, like how much development is happening in different parts of the city? Um, so I, I think I'm totally in proponent of changing a whole bunch of these Ps to Ms, especially anything that doesn't, like if there's no discretion, I think that we should change it. And I also think that anything that has an M deserves a big sign to tell people there's change coming. There's not much you can do about it, but you could show up to talk, as, as long as it like, yeah.
But just one point of clarification on that, Commissioner Mills. Some, somebody from the public could do that, but we as a body would not necessarily know about the project, not have any images of the project. We wouldn't have anything we'd be referring to and the petitioner wouldn't be there. So it's like a really different.
It's a completely different, I think that, I think it's a very different forum. And I think that that is actually, like, I don't know another way for us to, like if suddenly we got a neighborhood showing up for something that's going to the planning manager, I think that that helps raise our like ability to question, like what is this all about? Like, um.
And then one more question, and then Commissioner Norton, uh, Alexis and Brett, isn't it the case that nothing on here, everything, nothing on here has any discretion other than the first two lines, under zoning and special exception U section?
Yeah, that's correct. Site plan, um, site plan is an administrative function that if you meet the standards, you will be approved. I also agree that there might be multiple ways that you can meet those standards. But um, but when we are, whether, whether I am approving a site plan at my desk or whether or not we are presenting a site plan to you, we are presenting a report to you that says it meets all of the technical requirements of the ordinance or it doesn't.
Right.
Um, so I, I, yeah, so I.
I just wanted to be clear though, that when like Commissioner Mills or Commissioner Adams or Norton are saying anything that doesn't have discretion, should we move to manager? It basically would be the only thing that we as a commission would see would be PUDs and rezonings and special exceptions.
Yeah, and, and no change would be provided because you have to by state law.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Norton.
Well, I guess I, maybe I need to go study that table a little bit more. So I agree that there are administrative decisions and if a pro, if a proponent satisfies the standards, they should be approved. You can't come up with some other reason to say, well, you've met the standards, but we're still going to exercise our discretion and say, we don't like it and we're going to turn it down. You can't do that. But I think it is the case sometimes there are standards that are loosely written enough or there's enough variation in them that you could satisfy them in different ways. And, and so maybe discretionary is not the same. I'm not sure what the right term is that I'm trying to get at. But I think there are times when there's enough reasonable people can disagree on whether or not the standard has been adequately met. If there's room for reasonable people to disagree, that's the kind of administrative decision where the planning commission would be great, because then you can engage in the dialogue to decide. If it's, if it's a kind of a decision where no reasonable person could say that doing it this way would be better than that way, then it really is truly a ministerial administrative decision, either they satisfied it or not. That's the distinction I'm trying to draw. And maybe that's dancing too much on the head of a pin. I'm not sure, or you know, trying to thread this needle. Um, but um, I guess I would ask you, Mr. Leonard, to study that table and think, where are the things aside from PUDs where reasonable people could disagree on whether a particular standard has been satisfied? And if you stumble across a few of those, those would be the things I would say, okay, that's a good role for the planning commission. If you conclude that, yeah, either you've satisfied it or not, and there's no reasonable way to interpret it otherwise, then that's a manager decision. That's the way that I would approach it and think about it. Um, I totally agree with Commissioner Adams' concern that when we have public hearings where in fact, all of the decisions, nobody, no reasonable person could disagree, then we're setting up a false expectation. Um, and so that's problematic to have planning commission review. At the same time, I think Commissioner Abrams, Abrams' comment is really well taken. So not that I would ever shoot at Mr. Leonard or his staff, think about the institution. You want to set up a mechanism so that somebody can check the manager's decisions to make sure that in fact, they're being done correctly. And if they're completely non-transparent and happening behind closed doors, that's a problem. So we need to, so having, so you know, putting people on notice that a site plan is going to be reviewed and maybe some kind of a report of here are the site plans we reviewed and why? I don't know, I don't want to create necessary, you know, extra work that's unnecessary. But maybe even Mr. Leonard, you know, occasionally if you have site plans where interesting things happen and there's something educational about them, even making a presentation to the planning commission so to win, so we don't lose out on that educational aspect of it too, that might be helpful. So I think there's ways we can lessen the burden, but not totally jettison the other good things that site plan review and planning commission attention provide as well. I hope all that makes sense. Thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Leonard.
So I think another way that I think what Commissioner Norton might be getting at and uh, is that there are, um, there are ordinances you will find in use in Michigan that I think have standards that are absolutely subject to interpretation. You will find some zoning ordinance out there where they might, it might have a standard to the effect of um, uh, natural features provide an adequate level of screening of, of other uses. Um, and when a standard applies like that, I a hundred percent agree that there is a level of discretion, how Commissioner Norton might disagree with the, the answer to that than Commissioner Mills than I. But I do want to be clear, we try very hard not to put those kind of discretionary standards in our code. Um, it's not to, honestly, I wish that times we had more discretion. I wish we had more flexibility at times, but um, we have been um, pretty dutiful and careful over time uh, with the advice of some certain uh, assistant city attorneys over history and of current ilk that um, really challenge us at times to make sure that when we are putting standards in, they're measurable, that there is very little opportunity for a difference in opinion on those. I'm not saying that, I'm not saying that there, they don't exist, but I just want to be clear. There are ordinances out there where the standards for site plan review might be 12 standards that are adequately does this, adequately does this, adequately does that. Our standards are not that. Our standards are, do you meet the zoning ordinance requirements? So, um, so I just, a little framework, I don't know exactly if that's what you were talking about, Commissioner Norton, but I think it was illustrated, illustrative of how this does, how site plans can be approached variably in different circumstances.
Yeah, exactly. And if you're confident as you work through this, that in fact, the standards that we're looking at are distinct and clear enough that they're not, then yeah, those should be manager approved.
Yeah.
So I, I mean, I feel like I, I very comfortably could say everything uh, in the PDF that you shared with us on page eight at the bottom where it says other site improvements. I think everything in the table below that for the next page and a half could be Ms. Like I don't, I think that that's a pretty non-controversial choice. Removal of sidewalks, new private streets, mod, changing your natural features protection plan, moving your building, these kinds of things. Is there anyone like strongly opposed to that? No. Okay. I think the, I think where there's probably room for more discussion is in this middle tier existing building work slash modifications about whether all of those would move to M. I think um, some of them might be worth considering keeping P, like large residential projects. I mean, if we're getting, if we're digging, I don't know that we want to get this fine grained, but I, I think residential one to four dwelling units should not be P. I, I'm trying to remember. I guess we did look at the one on um.
They're only, yeah, so I think that's a good question. They're only a P when they happen in a zone where other uses could go in that building. When they are in a residential zone, you don't see them.
And why? Do you, do you remember the logic behind that? Cause I don't.
The logic is that uh, some, some nefarious property owner might sub, submit a four unit, a residential building and instead put four cafes or four marijuana businesses or four restaurants or four, name your other D1 or D2 use in that building.
But what would planning commission do about that? I mean.
You couldn't because it's permitted uses.
That's what I'm saying. Like, I don't know, I don't know why we need to look at that, but yeah.
Like Alexis, there might be another aspect to it that I'm missing.
Alexis.
I think it speaks to though, that we need to look at this, right? It, it speaks to it. Um, this was much more applicable um, when we had parking minimums because you could do a site plan for a building, put four apartments in it. Um, and that might require four parking spaces because parking did not go by zoning, parking went by land use. But it was in a commercial district. And so the next owner, the next tenant could put a restaurant. Restaurants would require, I don't know, 20 parking spaces. So we need, but we required the site plan because we needed the mechanism to tell them you need more parking. Also propose parking with your change of use. Uh, we have zero parking requirements now. It's much, it's almost a non-issue, but this is a legacy. And it just speaks to why we are asking for, and let's look at this holistically, question all the levels.
Great. Uh.
We, we only have a few minutes left, so we will begin the conversation about the third part, but probably not finish it.
Oh, um. As I said, we require a lot of content. Um, some petitioners tell us it is a lot more than other communities require. Some other communities provide a preliminary site plan and a final site plan. The preliminary gives them some sense of entitlement, maybe before they have to have the same level of engineering detail. So um, I thought maybe a starting point, and, and I want to be clear, we're going to be having conversations with our colleagues across the organization too, to make sure that we're aware of, you know, their thoughts on it as well. But I wanted to just take the temperature of this group at least. Are there things in the site plan that you never look at that frankly, you don't care about? Um, what are some of those things? And then part of, part of the emphasis of requiring so much is so there's more predictability so that the plan that you approve or the council approves or I approve is very consistent with what gets built. The less detailed analysis that our solid waste reviewers, our engineering reviewers, our stormwater reviewers, our traffic reviewers are doing increases the chance that there will need to be some adjustment to that site to accommodate a concern. And so what is the level of comfort um, with the commission to, or, or for us to explore with? If, because I think if we're going to require less information, we have to be open that there might need to be some adjustments as then that information is subsequently submitted. If we find, you know, if, if conceptually they think they're going to be able to um, access water here, but it turns out they need to access water from another location, that might have some implications to the site. So those are my questions here. What are, what are some of the content that you as approvers never look at? Is not valuable to you? Um, and what, what would be your comfort level about changes to something after you approved it based on some of those details being provided later in the process? And if you're tapped out, we can also just put this on another agenda.
I'm happy to. I'm happy to jump in. I just, I was waiting to see if anybody else. I think there are definitely things that I never look at. Um, so just to answer that question first, I don't look at the photometric plan, I don't look at the grading and soil erosion control plan, I don't look at the utility plan. These aren't things I'm trained to assess and I completely trust city staff to approve those. Um, I think the things, I'm sure there are others, but just those are the ones that jump out to me. I think the things that we, I would guess, as a body, we spend the most time looking at are dimensional layouts, you know, site plans, elevations and architectural and massing drawings. Um, and maybe that's, those are the things, right? Like, that's kind of it. Um, I think like when Shan, you know, when Shannon and we had a landscape architect, we, the, the natural features plan was really important, but that's not currently something that we tend to focus on as a body, because we don't have that expertise. Uh, I don't know how to answer your second question, Brett, because I don't know how extreme those changes might be, like.
And I don't either.
What is the threshold for saying, then we got to go back to planning commission now because your building has rotated 90 degrees and you have two curb cuts instead of one? And, you know, like, I just don't know. So I need the hard question to answer. Yeah, Commissioner Norton?
Um, did Commissioner Mills have something? Did, did you want to say something?
Oh, the, the, I was going to bring up Shannon and say, like, back then, we used to look at some other things that we don't anymore. While I'm unmuted, I'll just say the only, I, I agree, those are the key things that I look at. And the only thing that I feel like comes up a decent amount that we often talk about is like, location of, of trash, because that matters sometimes to neighbors. And so like, that's something that I feel like it's a weird thing, but like, sometimes we have a lot of conversation about where the trash receptacles are. Um, or bike rooms. But I mean, at some point, like, I don't know that that's worse. So, like.
Both of those would be in the dimensional layout.
Right. Exactly. But also, like, if they change those things, like, I don't know what the current discretion to be able to change those things is. I feel like they say our, we have our piece, we say our piece. Um, I don't know what the, um, how much flexibility there is. And so those are just the things that I do feel like, yeah, exactly. I don't think it requires any more information from us, but that was more to the second question about in terms of changes.
Okay. Yeah. Commissioner Norton?
Um, so I, I haven't been on planning commission long enough to have near the experience that my fellow commissioners have to pass judgment on this, but to my mind, the thing, the thing that pops to my mind is kind of the distinction between a preliminary plat approval and a final plat approval for a subdivision, um, action where maybe the site plan should be the preliminary checks to make sure that in, um, the key things can be met through this proposed project, the key requirements can be satisfied in, in concepts. And, um, there aren't any, going to be any hidden, hidden things that pop up. Well, what we have to do now is fundamentally different than what we told you before, because we just didn't think about this before, we didn't know. So, so the site plan, that the site plan approval should be that more that preliminary, almost a sketch plan, just hit, pick up the key things that you want to make sure are going to work. And then the final, there's, there's a, it doesn't have to be a formal full final site plan, but there's a final check that's going to happen with each of the divisions of the city that are confirming that you can control stormwater or whatever else. The developer needs to know they're going to have to satisfy them, but they also know there's some room there to figure out how to do that as we get further along in our project. And that's where we should allow the flexibility to take space. So I would, I would approach it from that perspective, like, what are the key things you really want to make sure that those questions have been asked before you give site plan approval, recognizing there's a whole lot of detail later that can be worked out that we don't need to approve right now, that can be more of a technical thing later. So is that helpful at all? Does that provide useful guidance?
Yeah, I, you know, I, and, and again, I think, I think this is going to be a, uh, an ongoing conversations, because I think when I talk to some of the people who are performing some of those reviews, they're going to have a different perspective on the level of information that's important for them to identify the important things, you know, um, or even what those important things are. So, um, but that's, that's why I kind of want to start with your perspectives on that. So that's, I think you really encapsulated sort of what the exercise is ahead of us, right? So. Say it 56. Thank you.
You're muted, Ellie.
My turn. Okay. Any last comments about site plan review? All right. We do have one last opportunity for public comment, where persons may speak for up to three minutes. You can use the raise hand feature in Zoom if you'd like to address the ordinance revisions committee.
Mr. Garber, you can unmute and spend three minutes talking to the ordinance revisions committee.
Um, thank you, Mr. Leonard. I guess I need no introduction. Um, regarding the possibility that by right site plans would no longer go before planning commission, if I understood that right, and maybe I didn't, but if I did, I strongly oppose that change. First of all, that prevents the kind of public discussion involving the petitioner, the public, and the commission that currently takes place. That should always happen, and not just in cases where there are unclear standards. Even when it's absolutely clear that the petitioner has met the letter of the UDC, there still should be a public site plan review. Um, I in fact, want to push back against the distinction between discretionary and administrative. Um, if our UDC were a complete expression of the community's wishes around development, I would agree that there's no role for the commission and the public. But that's not the case. UDC falls short, way short, especially in the areas of sustainability and affordability. Um, I also want to push back against the notion that giving the public a chance to comment on a by right plan sets up a false impression that we have discretion when we don't. I mean, there's always some people who may not get it, but I think most public comment around site plans is pretty well informed about how our ordinances work. It's not doing us, the public, any favor to cut us out of the conversation. And it's my experience that most developers are willing to go beyond the UDC when the public makes reasonable requests. But they first need to know what the public wants, and that is best done in the presence of the full commission, which has the ability to amplify our comments in that public forum. I mean, you've all seen it. Um, there, there have been, uh, changes at the commission level to site plans that aren't required in the UDC, and that comes about because of this interaction between the public, the commission, and the petitioner. Um, I can't stress enough that that's absolutely critical to maintain, uh, in all cases. And, uh, not just because, um, I enjoy hearing myself talk. Um, I probably do to some extent, but I like to think that I make constructive comments, and it's not just me. Uh, many others, I think, in this community, um, have valuable contributions to make to these discussions. So let's keep them. Um, and, uh, you know, with the exception of the comp plan, I don't think this has been a great burden on planning commission. Um, yeah, there's always a few, um, people who, um.
Thirty more seconds.
Have not done the necessary preparation, or don't have the necessary background to really understand how the process works. But again, I think they're the exception, and, um, we should strive, uh, every way we can to keep the public involved in the process as much as possible. Thanks again. And again, really have a great holiday weekend for everyone.
Thank you.
And for all your work.
Thank you. You, too.
No other speakers, Commissioner Abrams.
All right. Then we come to our last agenda item, which is adjournment. Have a great long weekend, everybody. Bye. Thank you.